Full board to order. We want to welcome everybody who's joining us this afternoon. And for all those that are watching online, if you would like to follow along with tonight's agenda, it can be found at our website, warrenschools.com, and click under the Board tab and then under Meetings. Can I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Say.
A second by Mr. Judkins. Any discussion?
Chairman Koch, I would need to add, suggest an addition in other business related to consideration of the EV bus grant. So I'd like to ask that you all consider that as a part of an amendment to the agenda.
All right, can we get a motion to amend the agenda for this?
So.
Got a motion by Mr. Colwell, and a second by Mr. Judkins. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I gotta go back.
Now we gotta go back. So we do have a, any discussion, any other discussion on the tonight's agenda? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. At this time, we will please stand for the pledge of allegiance and allow Mr. Colwell to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda? Got a motion by Mr. Bennett. Second?
Say.
Got a second by Mr. Brown.
So one, one other item for your consideration. We have two budget amendments in there, in the consent agenda. One of those had to be switched at the last minute. It was a calculation error. You have that in front of you. It is not a significant calculation error, but it was, one line was wrong. But I wanted you to make sure that you were able to see that before you were able to vote on the consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions about that, but budget amendment one and two are both in the consent agenda.
Anybody got any discussions on the amendments to the budget? All right, all in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? Any more questions over this budget amendment?
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry, you have a motion and a second.
All right, yeah, all in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda. Say aye. Any opposed? Moving on to, there is no public comment tonight, so we'll move on to our student advisory report.
In Warren County sports news, archery had tryouts, and they are practicing currently. Cross country had a girl go to the state meet. She placed 84th, and she's the first ever female cross country runner from Warren County High School to go to state. In football, Isaiah Rovleto, Christopher Rovleto, Raul Manus, and Exeter Hookormick made first team all-region. Brady Swallows and Gage Harris made second team all-region. Kai Naretz are your 2024 state champions in small game day, and your 2024 state runner-ups in small pond. This year's state title marks the fourth for the team. There was an athletic field trip to Swanee to see the facilities and hear from admission counselors, and there were two athletic signings for Lawrence Latin and Kai Damon.
Beta went to a convention over the break, and they brought home 12 awards. The Dungeons and Dragons club meets each week, and they're planning a trip to the Renaissance Fair in May 2025. SCC LA is preparing for competition this season with ProStar and TAN Junior Chef hoping to repeat a win this year. Posta completed one of the most successful blood drops held at WCHS. It had 49 minutes of blood donated. It was able to save 147 mobs. Multicultural Club had a lecture from Representative Sherrill. NHS collected over 1,000 children's books for their fall service project and donated them to Hamilton Street Activity Center. Youth Leadership had a communications day. The children started the day by listening to four different nonprofits talk about their business, and then they kind of go to support the school year.
On October 26th, the band participated in a Trojan marching individual in Saudi Daisy. They walked away winning both the Class 4A and the Large Division Championship for the evening, capping off our competitive marching band season. They have shifted to concert band season, and the dates are listed on your paper as well. Choir had their annual Christmas show, Sons of the Season, tonight at the high school. Also, members of the Select Ensemble will be leaving on Thursday, December 12th to perform at Disney's Cadillac Processional. JROTC, they recently competed at the US Army JROTC Raiders National. Varsity division at FT Knox, Kentucky, and All Military Service Raiders National in Valona, Georgia. The young ladies fought hard against some of the best teams for all of the country in grueling events, which included the Gauntlet Cross Country Rescue, physical team test, four kilometer mountain run, and their specialty in their one rope bridge. This all occurred after an amazing season of victories in both female and KLA divisions. Future Climate Committee raised $1,137 for East Tennessee disaster relief efforts. Student Advisory Committee council meeting, the students discussed the following. Digital clocks, the fire alarm system, bathrooms being locked, and WCHS being a five school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think this is one of the times that, in an era of always seeing the negative, is put out there for us to see. When you, when you start reading this and start hearing the things that, that our high school and these, these kids are doing, positive for this, not only for the high school, but for our community, that's things that should be highlighted daily more than a lot of the negative things we're hearing. So, thank you. All right, anything else? Anybody getting questions for our advisory panel? So we'll move on to recognitions.
Thank you, Chairman Koch. We always recognize a certified and classified Employee of the Month, so I'm going to ask Mr. Will Coxon if he'll come up, please. I'm going to read what was said about him and his, the nomination for this award. So, Mr. Will Coxon is a member of our maintenance crew, specifically at Warren County Middle School. He was nominated by Robyn Kirby. She said, "On behalf of the WCHS Band Football Concessions, we'd like to extend our heartfelt appreciation to Mr. Will Coxon for his support and dedication. Over the past few years, during our time in concessions, we've encountered several repairs and improvements needed to help keep our operations running smoothly, and each instance, he has gone above and beyond, not only addressing each request promptly, but exceeding expectations with the quality of his work. His attention to detail, his willingness to lend a helping hand and tools, and his positive attitude have made a significant impact on our team and our ability to serve our community. His support has been invaluable to us in ensuring our facilities are safe, efficient, and inviting for all who visit. From fixing broken water heaters and replacing worn-out faucets to adding extra electrical outlets so we can sling even more barbecue, Mr. Will Coxon has tackled every challenge thrown his way. Thanks to his handiwork, our concession stand has not only stayed functional, but has also become a powerhouse, ready to keep up with the game day crowds and all their cravings, and I feel like I've gained a friend. Thank you, Mr. Will Coxon, for all that you do to make a difference. Your efforts are deeply appreciated, and we look forward to many more successful seasons with your continued support." Our Classified Employee of the Month is Mr. Robert Wilcox.
Hold on. You got one more?
Yeah, and you don't get, you don't get a half a penny.
We got one more thing.
Right here.
He's got you some.
All right, now you can, now you can go sit down. All right, so our Certified Employee of the Month is Ms. Laura Lippi. I'm going to ask her to come up. But I'm also going to ask Ms. Dana Mulligan to come with her, because Ms. Mulligan is the one that made the recommendation, so I'm going to let her read it, which is much better than me reading it.
Laura has been an amazing AP Psychology teacher and Social Studies Department Chair, but she has been phenomenal as the new teaching, as a professional teacher. Her activities are fun yet relevant. The students are so impressed under her leadership. They are confident, creative, and enthusiastic. What a wonderful way to excite and grow future educators. I know that the program will continue to grow and be even better. I highly recommend Laura Lippi as Employee of the Month.
Our Certified Employee of the Month. All right, come here. You get the medal. There you go.
Here we go.
One more.
Congratulations.
You want to announce that?
Oh yes, typically, this is the point where we take a pause. If anybody would like to leave, they're welcome. You are welcome to stay at all, but I have a feeling there will be a few people that want to take off. Our recognitions are open.
All right, we'll move on to operations reports.
Well, we've got facilities and resources first.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Yeah, David Northcutt is not able to be here tonight, so you're stuck with me. So, we'll start with talking about our employee center, which is also what we're calling our new conference space out there. He says that the final punch list is still lacking a few items. Unfortunately, that punch list got a little bit longer this past week. We've got some issues structurally that we've had been discovered with the addition of the room dividers. And so, the things that were added in order to support those are not supporting those like they should. And so, we have architects and general contractors who are trying to decide what we're going to do. So, we had hoped to be meeting in that in January. I do not anticipate that that's going to be the case at this point. So, we'll play that out and figure out what we need to do to get that fixed. But disappointing, because we had hoped to be meeting there sometime soon, but we're at their mercy as far, as far as figuring that out. As he mentioned in the last meeting, the new addition at the high school annex is complete, and everyone seems to be pleased they've been moved in there. And I assume everything's still going well there. I'll look at Mr. Hobbs for that approval. You also know that we've been renovating the west basement over the course of the last couple of months. That also hit a snag with the fire marshal, so the fire marshal has come in and inspected, and we've had to stop that until we can get an architect to sign off on some of the changes. Alan Hill's been contacted, and he is working through that, and so we're hoping to get that taken care of here soon. Also, some of you all mentioned, I think in our last meeting, about outdoor lighting at some of our schools. They have been working really hard to, one, figure out where that outdoor lighting needs to take place and be fixed. But I also know Ray Robinson has been going around in the wee hours of the morning, checking out lights and making a list and getting those to maintenance, and they're doing their best to try to get those replaced. As always, if you find some spots that, while you're out, it's typically begin, becomes an issue during basketball season, especially now that it's getting darker earlier. If there are places that are dark, then please let them know or let me know, and we'll get those taken care of. Okay? Any questions about any of those for facilities and resources?
All right, we'll move on to operations report.
All right, thank you. So, we are continuing our journey through our school spotlights every month, and so because we don't have enough meetings, and this is our combined November and December meeting, you get two school spotlights tonight. So, happy to have Mr. Chris Hobbs, the principal at Warren County High School, who's going to come and share about? The high school. The high school.
So, hate to say this, but some of my kids already stole some of my thunder earlier, but I want to go over what we kind of accomplished this first semester and everything as a celebration. And, you know, we want to make sure that, again, going back to the positives about our school. And of course, it starts with my team. Our team has worked very hard. Mr. Lippi is back here in the back. But also, my assistant principal, excuse me, my assistant principals in, there are different academies. They've done an outstanding job of trying to become better instructional leaders each and every day through our ILT teams and through our, our meetings that we have when we're going over data, things of that nature. They have done a really good job of growing themselves into, into what we're trying to accomplish. Our guidance counselors, they do an amazing job. I shouldn't put guidance up there, because they're actually school counselors. They would probably kick me in the knee if they'd heard that right now, sorry. But they do an amazing job. And also, our social and emotional support. Ms. Rachel Mitchell has always been outstanding at what she does. The addition of Tyra Wright this year has been, really, has gone very well and everything, not just for the students, but also for the teachers. She's learned to do some stress management with our teachers, some coping skills with our teachers and things of that nature. But she has been a great addition as far as the emotional support that we have with the high school. Our block schedule seems to be going well. I have not had anybody complain to me, to my face, or anything like that. But our, our, excuse me, our, our block schedule, our traditional block schedule, again, I think the teachers have been pleased with it because of having the planning each and every day. That gets better communication and support back to the parents and to the students. And also on top of that, too, I think it's been great for the students, because instead of having to flip-flop A-B-A-B every day, it's been a little bit more consistent as far as that goes. I could ask Ms. Carter for her opinion and everything, because she's been through both. But I think, you know, it's gone very well as far as, and of course, we have four lunches instead of the five, so that's been, you know, planning keeps and everything. But as far as the traditional block, I think has gone very well. Ms. Dana, Ms. Lippi, you know, any concerns? But again, I just want to promote that and thank everybody for their help on getting that done as well. Our cell phones, again, looking at the data from last year, in the green is last year, the average referrals per day that we were having and everything, and in the blue is everything this year. And of course, in August, we had everybody, sorry. Of course, in August, everybody wanted to see where we're at and everything, so they were a little higher than the previous years. But as you can see, our referrals have gone down each month and everything. November, we had, you know, before Thanksgiving break, everybody gets ready, gets ready to go. But again, our, you know, the data proves that, and also our support inside the school, it's been great because from the teachers as well, talking about how the students are talking, they're talking, they're talking, they're talking. You know, we had one teacher complain that the cafeteria was too loud and everything, and it was great, because they're talking. Coach Fish was like, they're doing great. You know, just going back to your classroom instruction, you'll be okay. So, but I think we've had more engagement and everything, you know, with our, with our students. I think we've had less, you know, dealings with our bullying. It has gone down, knock on wood, has gone down in those situations. But, and again, talking about to some of the students and everything over the first couple of months, it was great, because, you know, we would give them a hard time about it, and they would look at you and go, you know what? At first, I didn't like it, but it's, it's not as bad as what it really is. You know, this one, one student said, "I sat down in my study hall, and I didn't have my phone, and I got all my homework done. It was amazing." You know, so it was like, I was like, well, there you go. But again, you know, I thank the board very much so for that policy, because I think in the long run, it's really going to help us out academically and emotionally, and like I said, socially as well. Again, our celebrations, my kids kind of took some of the thunder away from it, but it's okay. Because, I mean, everything that we've accomplished so far, our competitive cheer for nationals, Pionerats, state champs, small day, game day. Our Beta students did awesome. They came home with 12 awards at the last convention. Emma Kirby from our band was selected to perform with the Middle Tennessee All-Region Silver Band, so it's congratulations to her. We had Kai Damon and Lawrence Latin both signed to go play golf and softball at the next level. We had Emma Woodley as a freshman, competed in the state cross country, first time ever. And then, of course, our Lady Raider, Lady Cadets and everything, and our JROTC, back-to-back national champs. So, just want to say, you know, congrats to them. And of course, our Teacher of the Year that we had this year, Tessa Turner, April Bibbin, Steve Hillis, Russell Prater, and Tiffany Laxson, amazing teachers. We could have listed pretty much every one of them in our school, but we had to choose, you know, everything, five, but these five are represented very well for our school. We're also excited about our girls' flag football, first time ever, that we're going to be having in the spring. Of course, Paul Willis Martin is our first head coach, and of course, we have assistant coaches down here. But we're really excited about that, having that come in this year. We've had, I think, 70 tryouts the first day, so it was hard cutting down and getting to a varsity and junior varsity. So, but again, you know, we're really excited about, you know, having that program added to us as well. Our Irish Foundation, and of course, we have a familiar face, sorry it was grainy and everything, but Mr. Carl Curtis became a part of the Irish family, but they were the fastest champions for the state of Tennessee in the class of 2024, so they won the award for it. Very proud of everything they do for our seniors each and every day. Our Nissan Centers of Excellence program continues to amaze. Ms. Cassandra Rhodes, she does a great job in that class. We had representatives come, nothing but good things, nothing but good things. They were very impressed with her and operation in our students. And of course, you haven't heard, we're a level five. So we became a level five composite school, first time ever. So I'm going to brag about that, sorry. But again, like I said, in English 1, 2, Biology and Algebra 1, there were all level fives in the T V S data. The numeracy, numeracy was a three for the first time in 14 years. Literacy was a five, and we had a five in literacy and numeracy. And the whole reason is because of these two things right here. Great teachers and our students. Sorry, I should have put great in there as well. Sorry, sorry about that, Ms. Carter. But again, the teachers and the students are the reason why we got that level five. They don't realize that. They don't realize that at all. And that's where I can't sit here and say how proud I am of my school just for the mere fact of staying on task, staying on the goal, and understanding on top of that, too, we're there for the kids. And I've got a couple in here, Dr. Hark is going to attest, too. The only thing I've asked my teachers to do is just go teach. Just go teach. Go teach and develop relationships. If you do those two things, the data will take care of itself. And so they have, you know, finally listened to me and everything because they're like, ah, whatever. But again, I am so proud of our school and proud of our students and proud of our teachers. They really deserve this. It's been a long time coming. And and like I said, the one thing I always want to make sure is it takes us all. It really does. It takes every one of us. It takes the home, it takes the school, and it takes the school board for us to get together and make sure that everything that we're doing is what's best for our kids. Every decision we make, whether people like them or not, we have to do what's best for our kids, period. And I'll launch you with, a teacher's job is to take a bunch of live wires and see that they're all well-grounded. So I appreciate the time. Sorry, I hope I didn't go over five minutes. And I just want to say thank you to the board.
Right on.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you to the board for all your support and everything about our school. Because like I said, these teachers, they deserve it. The students, they deserve it. So I can't be more proud of them. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hobbs before you let him go?
Mr. Hobbs, a couple of quick questions, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
You've went from five lunches to four.
Yes.
How are you able to do that with the size of the cafeteria? Because that's a phenomenal task.
Well, we opened the courtyard up for seniors.
I would imagine not.
Yeah, we opened up the courtyard for seniors. We started doing that last year. So ordered a bunch of picnic tables, things of that nature. So we have a lot of seniors that take that. And then we were kind of strategic in trying to do that. It's very tight. We have two lunches that are pretty tight. And of course, freshmen are always, you know, quite a bit in there. But we went through the enrollment and saw what floors that we have each one on. And we tried to strategically place about who goes when and everything to fit that amount, not to exceed it, so.
Great job on that. And the flag football, how many home games are you thinking we're going to have?
Well, I haven't got the schedule yet. One of my co-A Ds is in the back and everything. He is kind of over that. So I have not seen the schedule yet. And I know Mr. Coach Martin, he's been working on it hard and heavy about it. So we will find out about that and get that to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good job.
Good job.
Outstanding. Good job.
Sixteen home games?
Oh, you said home games?
Yes. We got a defibrillator in here.
That's all you got to worry about.
We have eight.
Eight.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought you said how many games total.
All right, so two for one. We've got, oh, you did it to him, all right. Warren County Middle School's new principal, I guess, he's not new anymore. He's been here on the job for five months now. So Mr. Caleb Cheehan, and glad to have him. He's going to tell you a little bit about, hold on. It's not his fault, that is completely mine. There we go. Mr. Cheehan, take it away.
Thank y'all for having me today. I'm glad to be here, glad to be in Warren County. Excited to share with you all about the great things going on at Warren County Middle School. Just a little background, so you know, we serve sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. We have 281 sixth graders, 238 seventh graders, and about 288 eighth graders, a total of 807 students. This Stephanie Rippey is our sixth grade principal. She handles the sixth graders, and she also does all of our math workforce. Dr. Lori Riley is our seventh grade principal. She handles social studies, science, and the seventh grade. And then Ms. Sarah Carr is our eighth grade principal this year. She does our E L A things. And so they all three do a wonderful job at Warren County Middle School. We have about 14 classroom teachers in sixth grade, 10 in seventh grade, and 10 in eighth grade, 13 specialized teachers, N R T I teachers, 12 related arts teachers. We have two school counselors, as well as one behavioral liaison counselor that Mr. Hobbs was talking about that helps our students, you know, with those social emotional needs. And so all of these people make the school run very smoothly. So I'm proud to work with them alongside them, see the great things they do every day. So I'm going to talk to you a lot about the celebrations that we are doing at Warren County Middle School, and quickly. This will work. All right. So we really embody a symbol of pioneers, our respectful, responsible, safe. We talked about that often. When we meet together as a school, we always go over that we were respectful, responsible, we're safe. We want them just to be mindful of that. So as they go on through their educational career, they know what respect looks like, they know what responsibility looks like, and they know what safety looks like. At the beginning of the summer, we started with the school leadership team. We wrote a new school mission and business statement. And it just says that Warren County Middle School is committed to empowering our pioneers as innovative learners who embody respect, responsibility, and safety. We offer individualized support of a learning environment and fosters growth and achievement while promoting accountability in every aspect of student development. Warren County Middle School is cultivating a learning environment where students thrive through a rigorous and relevant curriculum guided by high expectations. We ensure that students are prepared for high school and immerse confidence in their abilities. One of our main goals, we want them to go to high school and graduate and be ready to, as they leave Warren County Middle School, and support the high school and bridge that gap between the two. So that's something we're really trying to work on. We've had, we had three awesome Teacher of the Year, Graves Family Pharmacy helped sponsor. Actually, they've helped us sponsor Teachers of the Month, but we've just shown our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kristi Weeder, Ms. Amanda Gibbs, and Coach Ben Matheny. All these people are well-deserving. Ms. Weeder, the coach of the national championship pioneert dance team for our middle school. Ms. Gibbs leads our process champions team for capturing kids' hearts. And Coach Matheny coaches football, wrestling. He's just a real big asset to the school. So lots of great employees, lots of great teachers that love kids every day, and that's what it's all about. So we're happy to honor them. For the first time this year, to my knowledge, Warren County Middle School did a fall festival where we had the community in. We had a silent auction, we raised about $3,000. It was a really great night for the school, the community to come in. You know, kids came in, had a good time. The atmosphere was really, really great. It just really felt like a good family, you know, family place to be. And I was just very proud of that, and the staff are putting that on. So we're hoping to make that bigger and better as we move forward doing things like this. We had an awesome Veterans Day assembly where our students led it. We had students sing the national anthem, students say the pledge, and then the high school J R O T C come presenting the flags. So that was a really, really great day. One of the things that we're doing each quarter is school-wide assemblies. Every quarter, every quarter, we host a school-wide celebration assembly of the school, instruction in the teams. Those teams earn points throughout the nine weeks for attendance, for competitions, and for other achievements. And at the end of the quarter, we tally those and we announce the winning team. And then we bring them, we bring in the team donuts on Fridays one quarter or at the end of, on the Friday. So the kids are really, really excited about that. One interesting fact that I did want to point out is that the school is broken into teams. So it's navigators, pathfinders, trailblazers, prospectors, boons, bears, rockets, and discovers. And what that is, is those students travel in families, and that supports the student as a whole, so. During those assemblies, we recognize attendance. We call all the names of students who have perfect attendance. And then we draw a name, and those are the two lucky winners this last nine weeks who won prizes. So we post our attendance rate. We're trying to keep track of that because we want our attendance rate up because in order to learn, they have to be at school. So we're trying to get that in there to, for students to be at school and want to be at school. We also earn, during our capturing kids' hearts monthly awards, we had a school-wide, we recognized that at the school-wide assembly. So teachers are on board with that, and we're recognizing those students for going above and beyond those characteristic traits. Lots of clubs and activities at the middle school. We have interact, Beta Pep Club, robotics, student council, campus life, band, spin club, chess club. Beta just went to convention, competed quite a bit. Campus life meets every Wednesday. Band is a huge program at Warren County Middle School. We have about 120 students who take part in that. They have a big concert coming up in December. We would love for you all to come. It's December 19th. You can see a lot of great talent. That won't just be Warren County Middle School, man, that would be all the county band. So great things going on there. Lots of sports activities, just like other schools. We have basketball, soccer, football, dance, baseball, cheer, archery, and softball. And I do want to give a special shout out to Coach Betsy McBride. She does a great job managing these sports at Warren County Middle School and does a great job making sure our coaches and our athletes have what they need to be successful. So I want to, you know, thank her for doing that as well. She has a big role for the school. One of the things that we've done this year instructionally is we've increased daily minutes to enhance learning opportunities. And we've dedicated a 55-minute block twice per week, excuse me, twice per week, so we can target remediation and acceleration. So we're trying to support those students' academic growth. And this has really been beneficial to students, and it's created opportunities for student success. So we're excited about building upon that and getting those kids in the seat as much as possible and growing them, you know, in all areas of their educational success. Some of the goals we have is we just want to leverage our existing programs. We want to continue to strengthen our school culture, strengthen the social emotional learning of the school. We want to continue to celebrate our successes, and we just want to use our instructional minutes appropriately and just make sure we're teaching kids and doing all those things for them, so. I know it was a quick snapshot of the middle school, but do you have any questions?
Appreciate y'all celebrating attendance and sending these for these kids because like you say, if they're not there, they cannot learn.
Right, yes, sir, yes.
Well, I'm excited to see what results are in the next couple of years because we've talked about it earlier in a meeting about, you know, we don't really see the results till later on when we get our scores and all this back. So I'm excited for you and what you've done there, and excited to see the growth that's going to happen there in the next couple of years, so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cheehan.
Thank you, again.
All right, one of the things that we also try to do is give you a district perspective of what's going on. And so our C T director, Ms. Tracy Reisinger, is here. Do you want to show the video first? She's got a video, so hopefully this will work.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to come showcase C T E tonight. As you see from our video, we are implementing so many innovative, amazing programs in Warren County for our students in career technical education. And I'm so excited about those opportunities for the And I'm so excited about those opportunities for the students to become college and career ready when they graduate high school. And if you look at the handout I gave you, um, you can, we can go through some of the things that are offered. Now, the video was just about Warren County High School and my audiovisual, uh, department produced the video, and that is one of the new programs of study that we implemented with the Innovative Schools Model Grant. Hopefully, as they do more and more, we're going to showcase to other schools, like things we have going on at the middle school, things we have going on at the K eight schools as well, so. But if you'll look at your paper I gave you, you can see I have listed every program of study and every career cluster that we teach at Warren County High School and Warren County Middle School and the K eight schools. Um, I'm not going to read that to you because you just saw the video that showed showcased most, most of those. I do want to, um, because I know I'm probably over my five minutes, because the video was seven minutes, I know.
You go right ahead.
Okay.
If you don't call attention, I will.
Okay, all right. I do want to flip over to page, uh, three, where we do talk about our middle school, because we do offer some classes there. And Warren County Middle School, we offer Introduction to Social Health Class, STEM Explorer, STEM Innovator, STEM Designer. And we also have CTE Career Coaching, which I'll talk more about in a few minutes. Uh, the STEM classes are also taught at our K eight schools to sixth, seventh and eighth graders using an innovative, um, trailer that we created several years ago with a Perkins Reserve Grant called STEM on Wheels. So we're able to take our middle school STEM program and take it to the K eight schools. So those sixth, seventh and eighth grade students were able to have that same program that was at Warren County Middle School. We also are able to offer some early post-secondary opportunities at Warren County High School. We have dual enrollment with TCAD and Motlow, and we have dual credit with Motlow and MTSU. If you will look down on the third page, you can see some of the industry certifications we offer. And what those are, it's an opportunity for a student to take a test at the end of their program of study and earn a certification. Like, for example, a Siemens Level One Certification or a, um, Certified Clinical Medical Assistant in our Health Science, Hair Braider Registration in our new Cosmetology Program. So we offer several different opportunities. And then on the back page, you can see that we have our CTSO, which are Career Technical Student Organizations. We have a lot of our students who, uh, participate in those. And we have DECA, FBLA, FCCLA, FFA, HOSA, Skills USA and TSA. And then a lot of what you saw on the video was from our Innovative Schools Model Initiative. We were able, through the Innovative Schools Model, to implement a cosmetology program. We've never had a cosmetology program until last year. I've been CTE Director for almost nineteen years. I got asked every year of my job, why do you not have cosmetology at Warren County High School? So now, when we ask that, we can always, we can say, we've got it now through the Innovative Schools Model Grant. We were able to im- implement the AV Production Program Study, which you just saw, one of the amazing, um, artifacts that they created. We have the Pioneer Kitchen On The Go Food Truck. I'm excited about that. We have the Pioneer Grow and Go Greenhouse, which you also saw in the, uh, video. Two middle school career coaches. We have hired Michelle Hill and Katrina Haley. Michelle Hill is housed at Warren County Middle School. Katrina Haley visits the five K eight schools, and they're working with sixth, seventh, eighth grade students to input, to talk about career exploration, to help the students take an assessment and learn about what we offer at Warren County High School as far as CTE. It just helps guide a student in the direction of, of possibly a career that they would like to do when they graduate. We also have funding for bus transportation for field trips. We are purchasing some vans for both high school and middle school career exploration and CTSOs. We've, uh, implemented Pathol Explorer and Virtual Job Shadow, Z-Space Technology. And the one that we're currently working on right now is the CTE Career Center that we bought over where the old senior center was. And we're going to turn that into a career center to showcase what we do at Warren County High School. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Do you have, uh, can you have a basic idea of how many students that are involved in post-secondary dual enrollment stuff?
I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but we have. We offer like welding. Our welding class is dual enrollment. Our, um, machine tool technology class is dual enrollment. Our cosmetology is dual enrollment. Automotive dual enrollment, building construction trades are dual enrollment. So we offer a wide range of dual enrollment opportunities. Yes, sir.
There's a couple of things. That, the STEM trailer that you talked about that travels, I know my daughter in Centertown, and they love it. They, that was, I mean, for years, that's been a big hit is, is when they, when they get to do that, that is, that is huge. Uh, and another thing, um, just kudos to all these instructors that you have that are teaching these, because, you know, you can see the desire that they have, the passion for it, and that hands-on. And I'll just say, uh, as a small business owner for over twenty years here in Warren County, I've probably employed a hundred people. And I've never once asked anybody for what their TCAP scores were. But if I could get somebody that has that, you know, ability that, to come in and, and already have those, you know, things, it's, it's unbelievable. So just what you're doing is, is amazing.
Well, I'm proud of what we do. It, it's a whole team effort. And the middle school principal, the high school principal, the K eight school principals, the K five school principals, they all work with me very closely to provide opportunities for students. We have, uh, we're offered thirteen career clusters out of the sixteen that are at the state. So that's amazing amount of career clusters for us to have one high school in our district. Twenty different programs of study at Warren County High School. We have twenty-seven CTE teachers at the high school, four middle school, the two career coaches, three TCAP dual enrollment teachers and two Motlow dual enrollment teachers. And if you can't tell, I just, I just love CTE. I love career technical education. I love providing these opportunities for students to see those students running to that food truck and that greenhouse truck. It just made my dreams come true, because I've wanted a food truck for probably twelve years.
That was, that was a good video when, when that food truck first got here and you could just see those kids excited when they run after that.
So I love career technical education. I appreciate you all letting me talk about it, and I appreciate everything you do to help us in Warren County with career technical education.
Tracy is a parent of one of, one of your, uh, cosmetology. She, I'm extremely, she's extremely happy you've implemented that program last year, but something else I noticed in your video, the diversity, the females that was welders and electricians and the males that was from anything from cosmetology to culinary, I think that's just absolutely awesome.
Thank you.
And the, the engagement of the diversity of the students in that.
We promote every program to every student. And hopefully with our career coaches, you know, those opportunities will, will be increased, because I want students to know they can do anything wanted, they want to do at Warren County High School. But yes, I noticed that as many females that we have in welding and, and the males that we have in health science, in the nursing program, it's just, uh,
Whatever they want to do, their gender doesn't matter.
Whatever they want to do. And like I said, we've just been able to offer twenty programs of study at Warren County High School. It's, it's amazing.
Yeah, really.
And then the middle school programs we offer just lead right into those.
Well, I think that's what I was going to say is that you talked about diversity. There's, there's been change in how we offer those too. We were often virtual courses that weren't connected with CTE. They're also having opportunity to go to Motlow and do those things, and we want to see those things expand. But, you know, you saw the, sometimes technology can just be technology, but you saw that's real life kids at work while they're at school. And that's a fantastic thing for our kids to be able to, uh, be able to experience so many different things in what they have and then be able to walk out the door. Often, she talked about with, uh, early post-secondary opportunities, they're walking out with certifications, but they're also walking out with hours toward TCAD or Motlow. And so, uh, they, they do a fantastic job. And I appreciate the leadership Tracy shows, but also on top of that, our school leaders who keep pushing for more and more and more, and our community that keeps pushing for more and more and more, uh, we, we, we've got a great program and we want to continue to see it expand as we can provide kids to our workforce.
Well, and just the, like I said, the partnerships we have with TCAD, with Motlow, with MTSU, with the industry partnerships. And then when I go and, and when I meet with Mr. Hobbs and I talk about, uh, a neat idea, he's like, let's make it happen, let's make it happen. So I just am excited about the partnerships we have in our school system as well, because everybody's open to talk about it and they're willing to, to work with me to to implement what we can to help our students.
I think the important thing, Cole, you know, there's nothing even more important than hands-on.
Exactly right. And that's, that's what you saw in the video, is the hands-on, and that's, that's what's important.
To follow up what Chairman Coates said about the instructors. These instructors are educating students that can walk out, out of, out of high school with a diploma, that can possibly make more than what their instructor is getting paid. That says a lot for instructors that are graduating students with certifications that's going to make more than what their instructor is making.
We have a great CTE department. I mean, uh, speaking about cosmetology, we, we had some students get a hair braider certification. They can go out and they're a certi- they're certified hair braiding, yeah.
I meant to bring it up.
They're certified hair braiders, which means they have a certificate that says they are certified in hair braiding. They can go and charge people to braid hair and make really good money braiding hair. So I mean, it's just those kinds of opportunities.
More members take these classes.
Yeah, I wish I could take some of these classes too, so. But I just appreciate you all and the support you give me.
It would make for good models that we could take.
So do y'all have any other questions?
We don't have to question the dedication and the passion that you have for this program, so we appreciate you very much.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the operations report is actually, um, it's listed on your agenda twice, but I'm going to go ahead and talk about it uh, in the operations report, because, uh, this is a proposed amendment to, uh, Board Policy six point two zero zero. That is what you all will know as our attendance policy. Uh, so the attendance policy is listed, has been, uh, active for a long time, but we are proposing, uh, or tonight is a proposed amendment to that that begins on page four. Um, and so you have had time to look over that. Hopefully, line twenty-eight, it allows for release time religious instruction. You will see that's a footnote, uh, to Tennessee Code Annotated, uh, Section forty-nine dash two dash one thirty. Uh, and that was a law that was passed in twenty twenty-three, uh, that details what religious, uh, released time instruction looks like. Uh, and so I, I will read a portion of that simply to say that this, uh, update to our policy has been crafted closely with the state law and some things that have been suggested in order for make sure our policy reflects state law. But the state law that I referenced says, "A public school shall, upon the request of a student's parent or legal guardian, excuse a student from school to attend a release time course in religious moral instruction for one school, one hour per school day, regardless of whether the Board of, Local Board of Education has adopted a policy under subsections, uh, but the requirements listed in the subdivisions one through nine are met." So really what you are considering is an update to our attendance policy that lists those areas uh, that must be met. And again, what that looks like is, uh, sections one, two, three and four say that the student's parent or guardian shall give written consent for their child's participation in this, uh, program. The sponsoring, sponsoring entity maintains attendance records and makes them available. Uh, number three, the sponsoring entity provides and assumes liability for the student from the time the student leaves the school until the student returns to the school. Number four, the student assumes responsibility for any missed schoolwork. Uh, there are other things that are written there. I do want to point out that it's, uh, I think important to our schools, uh, that one of the exceptions, or one of the stipulations is that students shall not be excused from a core curriculum subject to attend RTRI, which is Release Time Religious Instruction. So what you are considering is simply an update to Policy six point two that reflects what the state, state law says already. Uh, um, we are submitting that to you tonight for first reading, for adoption on first reading, and then we would, uh, have the requisite time until the January meeting for a second reading and adoption of this policy. So uh, I will submit that to you all for your consideration and have you to answer any questions.
All right, can I get a motion to approve, uh, on first reading this, uh, update to the tendancy, attendance policy?
A motion.
We got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Got any discussion over this? I know this has been talked about for a while, uh, with, with some of the county commissioners and, and this is just kind of clarifying all that and, or not very clarifying it, but it is putting it out there where we do have a policy on that. And again, it's, it's just, uh,
so I will again just say that it is state law. It, it, you're just considering what the state law says and adopt, potentially adopting that into our current policies, but that's again for your consideration.
All right, any discussion over this? All right, got a motion. You got a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries for first reading.
All right, so that again will be considered in the January meeting. My, uh, final thing on the operations report is that, uh, it's my obligation as the director to give you an update every year about the school report card. Um, it's increasingly frustrating for me, because we continue to get data back that's related to the school report card, and we still don't have all of the data back. And this is related to tests that were taken six months ago. Uh, we are anticipating any time data related to uh, the report card or the letter grades that were, uh, that began last year. Uh, we got some information, a little bit of information around that today, but we still don't know all of the things that we anticipate that coming in the next two weeks. But again, a part of our annual calendar is that you all have an idea of what to expect. We hope, uh, before the end of December, we're able to publicize all of, uh, the information related to our students' uh, performance on the TCAP or ELC test that happened last year. So, uh, I'll give you some, uh, overview of this. Uh, I, I really want to talk about the fact that there are lots of different avenues. Uh, the first that is considered with the report card is simply achievement. Uh, that this is what is taking place from students that are proficient or non-proficient on those end of the year tests. Uh, I want to say that eighteen out of twenty-seven of our subjects by grade level improved from a year ago. Uh, listed there are some of your high achieving schools that, um, in ELA and math specifically. Uh, you can see those three schools are the same, uh, but their proficiency rates, uh, were very high this past year. Uh, you will see in just a second that that's being rewarded throughout the state. Uh, but I want you to be aware of the achievement part of it, uh, that we are making incremental progress. It's not exactly where we want it to be. Uh, still, if you look at Eastside, that means that forty-one point two percent of their students grades three through, three through eight were proficient on the ELA portion of the, uh, TCAP last year. Forty-one point two percent is extremely high, even though it doesn't feel like it's extremely high. Uh, related to statewide numbers, that is high. We're very proud of Eastside for that number. But I want you to also understand, that also means six out of ten students are not proficient. Uh, so we understand there's plenty of work to do, but at the same time, we are very proud of the progress that we're making on that. Uh, also a part of achievement is our graduation rate. The district met the goal of more than ninety-five percent graduation. Uh, that's with Warren County High School and Warren Connect. Uh, some of the things that we've talked about, three hundred and seventy-five students took dual enrollment courses last year. Uh, more than eleven hundred post-secondary credits were earned. Four hundred and sixty-eight AP student, uh, AP courses were taken by Warren County students. That's at Warren County High School and Warren Connect. Forty point six of those students, uh, took the AP exam and passed to receive credit. Uh, twenty-one point seven was the national average in twenty twenty-three. So, uh, that's a high number based on what, uh, the national average of passing the AP exam is. So very proud of that as well. Now, part of this is also growth. So I want you to understand, we've talked about achievement. We've also talked about growth. Our district numbers, uh, we were a three in literacy. This is on a five-point scale. Uh, our numeracy was a two, our science was a three, and our social studies was a one. Uh, our literacy and numeracy combined was a three. Uh, understand that those numbers, we obviously want to be a five on those. Uh, we want to see those numbers rise and move forward. Uh, they are all improvements over a year ago. Uh, happy to report that you've already talked about Warren County High School being a five-level school, but also Eastside was a five-level school, uh, and Urban College and Centertown were at and above expectations with a three and a four. Uh, so very proud of those students. We see some cakes down there at the bottom. Uh, we were able to celebrate Eastside a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you'll see more cakes as we go throughout this presentation. But I do want you to understand, this is why I try to preach this. There are so many different measures that a school system has. This is simply related to growth. Uh, a predicted growth measure for students and schools throughout the entire state. So it's, you got to change your mindset from achievement to growth. Those are two different things, all right? But they are still, we still answer to both of those as we go through, all right? Now, here's a third scale that we have to answer to, and that's federal accountability. And that takes achievement, growth, and what's called ALPA, which is proficiency on English language. These are traditionally students that English is not their first language. Uh, a part of that federal accountability is chronic absenteeism. Uh, chronic absenteeism, understand, is defined as a student that misses no more than ten percent of the school year. So typically, if you had a hundred and eighty days of a school year, then a student to be cr- considered not chronically absent, they would have to miss less than eighteen days. Now, if we have snow days, which apparently it's snowing outside, because my phone's just buzzing off the bu- off the. Now, if we have snow days, which apparently it's snowing outside because my phone's just buzzing off the hood. If you have snow days or inclement weather days, that takes that number down from eight, one eighty to one seventy-nine, one seventy-eight, and then that number for chronic absenteeism is adjusted at that point. But I do want to brag on our schools. They saw that a part of our accountability two years ago was negatively impacted by our chronic absenteeism rate. And we improved by four percent, four percent district-wide in twenty-two and twenty-three. Eleven out of our twelve schools improved. There are four of your high flyers, Eastside thirteen point five percent. Hickory Creek improved seven point nine percent, Morrison six point nine seven, and Bobby Ray at six point seven. So very proud of that improvement as well. So here's what is detailed by federal accountability. On your left, this was Urban College Elementary School in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. You can see, you don't have to really know what the numbers mean, but you can also look at these colors and see yellow and red generally are not very good. But I'm proud to say, if you look at Urban College from twenty-three, twenty-four, those yellows and reds have gone to pretty shades of green. All right? Very pleased with that, and you can see that their achievement went up, their growth went up, their chronic absenteeism was excellent across the board, and ultimately got down here. They were, they had a final score of one point three two years ago, and they completely reversed that to a three point one this past year. And we had a lot of our schools that improved, most all of our schools improved their federal accountability this past year.
Before you move on?
Yep.
And we use that word growth, and I, we kind of know what it means, but for people that are listening, what growth, it's not students. It's, explain how that grows.
Well, so it's, it's, like I said, it's a prediction of each student's performance on a T cap test or an E O C. But now here's where it gets more convoluted. That prediction, when we get a number, is based on a cohort throughout the state. So they take all the numbers throughout the state, and then they start to assign levels of one, two, three, four, and five of how that student has been performing based on their prediction, but also against their cohort. So it's extremely complicated. I've been in education now twenty-two years, and we continue to go to T V O S web, uh, webinars and learning materials because people just simply have a hard time understanding that. That was my argument a year ago to say, you, we want some accountability from schools with letter grades, A, B, C, D, E, and F. My argument was is that we already to an extent have that with one, two, three, four, and five. But again, we now have an extra measure on that. So I don't know if that answers your question. I could pull up the T V O S website and show you all that, but you're gonna start nodding off when I start to do that, so. But growth is a part of a lot of the things that we do, but very happy to report, hopefully you've seen this in the news, but we did have three schools that were designated as reward schools, which is the highest designation that you can receive throughout the state, Eastside, Hickory Creek, and Urban College, based on their performance a year ago. And very proud of those schools. You can see we were able to hold a, an assembly with the teachers and students, and there were a lot of happy people, and we brought sheet cake, and it was just a fun day. It's not a lot, not every day is fun in a school system. The, this day was a lot of fun to be able, so I want to brag on those schools. So, well, all that being said, I want you to just be aware of, this is what our academic accountability looks like in E L A over the course of the last five years, all right? I ask this question often when I ask this of teachers. This was twenty nineteen, and this was twenty twenty-four. Those graphs tend to look the same across. You can tell the red and the orange and the green, it, it looks fairly similar. So I want you to understand, I want the community to understand, that changing these numbers with six thousand and two hundred students is incredibly difficult. It's a lot of work to make sure that those numbers change. Now, that's our goal, make no mistake about it. We want to see these numbers change, because here's the deal. If we're continuing with this over a course of a five to ten-year span, then it tells us that we've got some work to do in order to improve that. But I want you to look at these numbers up here. In twenty nineteen, seventy-one point five percent of our students were not proficient in E L A. If you remember what happened in twenty twenty, that number got worse in twenty twenty-one, because when we came back to school, we anticipated that being worse. Seventy-four point five percent were not proficient. But after that, you can see that that number has decreased every year. Now, not by much. I understand that seventy point nine percent to sixty-eight point three percent is not by much, but it is improvement, and I think that's a testament to our teachers and our students understanding the importance of, we want to see that number continue to get better, because nobody is going to say that six out of ten kids not being proficient is where we want to be, all right? So that's the accountability measure that we understand is important. This is the same thing with math. If you look in twenty nineteen, sixty-nine point seven percent, thirty point four percent. If you get down to twenty twenty-four, that number has not bounced back from where we went down. We went from sixty-nine to seventy-seven percent, from thirty to twenty-two in twenty twenty-one. But again, you've seen an improvement each year, twenty-two to twenty-five to twenty-six to twenty-seven percent. And people are working really hard to increase, to increase that number of level of students that are at proficiency. So when, in the next few weeks, you're going to get even more information related to letter grades, I do anticipate that you're gonna be very pleased with the improvement that our schools have made, even on letter grades, when we're able to announce that. But here's all of that to be said. Guess what? Testing starts at Warren County High School on Wednesday. So all of this data that we just talked about is good, and it's something that we're gonna use to get better, but really and truly, this data starts again for us on Wednesday, because English one, I believe, starts on Wednesday. So that data will start being collected for this school year, even on Wednesday. So our, our folks are working really hard. We want to work really hard to improve those numbers, but I'm very, very proud of the teachers and the students in this district that are working to make that better. So again, that's a five-minute presentation, of which I could give you a five-hour presentation. So I know that's a high-level overview, but I want you to be aware of that. Stay tuned to your press releases and to all the things that we're gonna be able to hopefully put out up here in the next couple of weeks, but we wanted you to be aware of that before that took place. Happy to answer any questions or comments that need to be made at this point? If none, then that wraps up our operations report.
Before we do that, would you give us an update on where we're at on our Yonder pouches?
All right, yep. So I have one that I can pass around, you can put your cellphone in it, just don't lock it up, all right? This is the, the most talked about pouch in, in lots of places, but you can see, this is actually a Velcro pouch. This is one that would be assigned to a student that might have a health need, to where they would be able to access that if they have a health need, but your cellphone will slide right there. And if it were a true Yonder pouch, it would fold over, and the magnet would come through here, and it would twist, and then you would not be able to open this again until that hits that magnet at the end of the day. So we anticipate, I've talked to, Mr. Sheehan had to go, but I've talked to Mr. Hobbs. We anticipate this being something that is happening after, after the first of the year for our students to be able to start using their Yonder pouches. And they've been working really hard. Actually, one of the things with the company that Yonder does is they provide a representative to help schools put together their policies related to this, because they're gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit. And guess what? Students are gonna have to remember to make sure they have their Yonder pouches if they want their phones in there. So looking forward to that rolling out.
Well, again, and there were some things that we could not anticipate about the, the lay-in, and one of those was because, as, as we talk about this, and Tennessee Assembly is, is working on a bill now, but Arkansas had passed a bill right before we put our order in for thirty-one thousand, I think, statewide for Yonder pouches.
Virginia has done the same thing.
And that put them behind in production, and that's why we didn't get ours.
So I'm really glad we have ours already, because I anticipate the state legislature's gonna take this up statewide next year, and so it may be something that a lot of school systems are looking for next year.
And we were all there at the leadership conference, and there was, that was a heated discussion and topic, and we had a lot of different school systems come to us and ask about some, some help and guidance on that, so. But thank you for that.
We'll be able to open that without being noticed, I can imagine.
Yeah, and I know that was, you know, that's a, for the public, that was something that a lot of questions were about, the pouches and, and the way they're implemented, and was it necessary? And, you know, that was, that's just another tool, I want everybody to know, that, that we felt, you know, best way to implement this. And it didn't roll out like we first planned, but I think, I think all the administrators, it's gonna go through another process here to, to help this out, so. All right, we're done with operations, we'll move on to curricula and achievement, since we've already approved of that.
So you've already approved that one, but you also have a second reading on those other three policies? So you probably want to take those one at a time and approve that.
All right, can I get a motion for approval on second reading for policy four point six zero five, which would be graduation requirements? Got a motion by Mr. Judkins, got a second by Mr. Colwell. Any discussion over that policy? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on to policy four point six zero six, graduation activities. Can I get a motion for approval of second reading for that policy?
Some.
Got a motion by Mr. Bennett, the second. Second by Mr. Brown, got any discussion over that? All right, all in favor, say aye. All, any opposed? Motion carries, and one more for policy number six point four zero five two, the opioid antagonist policy. Can you get a motion for approval of second reading for that policy?
Some.
Got a motion by Mr. Colwell. Got a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion over that policy? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion, motion carries. All right.
You go ahead.
No, go ahead.
It's other business.
This.
Where you at, yeah.
Okay, well, we're done.
You want to do the other?
Uh, it doesn't matter. Uh, well, I'll go ahead and do this first, and I'd put this on the policy, and this is something that, that I've talked to a couple of people in the community, talked to some county commissioners about this, uh, the possible naming of the agriculture hallway at the Warren County High School after Mr. Russell Watson. I talked to Mr. Hobbs about it the other night, and I think that's something that's more we can do. I'd just like to get some discussion, and, you know, I've had some people approach me from Mr. Watson's family about doing something in this, and if, I know he touched a lot of people's lives, especially in that agriculture department in Warren County High School, and I was, I was one of the students, and I'm Mr. Colwell, and, and we've all been touched by his commitment to Warren County agriculture in that department. So I would like to, a couple of things on this, I would like for us, as I've talked to them, we looked at February twentieth as National Ag Day. That's on a Thursday. We have a meeting scheduled for the following Monday. I would ask if we could get a motion to move that meeting to February twentieth, or our February meeting to the twentieth at the high school, and we may do a plot presentation for that hallway, if that's possible. I know we've got a workshop coming up, but if we can get some sort of approval on that, that way we're not up on that, if that will work, so. Just, just wanted to throw that out there, if, if we can get any discussion, or anybody want to make a motion on this? And we'll, and we'll work together, I'll work together with County Executive Bell, and I know the, the county commissioner wanted to do something too, so we kind of wanted to coordinate this together, so we can make that presentation together.
Are you asking for a recommendation from the board to name the hallway in his honor?
Yes, sir.
I'd make that recommendation.
I'll second.
I got a recommendation by Mr. Bennett, and a second by Mr. Johnson. Got any discussion over this?
Can I ask which, the whole entire hallway, the specific, just to the ag hallway?
Well, that's what I, I've talked to Mr. Hobbs about, and we would kind of like to get together and see what would be the best, what he would think, cause, you know, would be the best. I think probably that whole ag hall.
Because like I said, you have the one main hallway, and then you have the one to the right by the office, that, that's where the agriculture rewards and everything are, that way, like Mr. Daniel Smith classed. I mean, like I said, we got a discussion on last time, Coach Houghton and the board and everything, but it's our, to get their input as well.
So would you like us to report back in January kind of where?
Right, yes, where, where we're at.
Okay.
I guess it's very fitting, respect.
All right, any more discussion over that? All right, so.
Let's take a vote.
You want to take a vote? All right, all in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion, recommendation carries. All right.
All right, thank you. Real quick, sorry to add this at the last minute, but what you have in front of you is a packet from Highland prepared for us. This has been a long journey in talking about electric vehicles as far as related to buses, all right? If you'll remember, three years ago, we applied as a district for a grant that was available to individual districts, and we did not receive that grant at that time. I believe the following year, my, my timeline is a little foggy with this, because it has been such a long journey. Another grant, another round of grants were offered for electric vehicle buses. And at that time, lots of companies started applying on behalf of school systems. And we, if you remember, we entered into actually two grant applications. One of those was denied, but one of those was actually approved, and that was the one that was filed on behalf of Warren County Schools with Highland, all right? As a part of that, you all are well aware that we contract with Durham Bus Services, and so they had to make sure that Durham Bus Services was on board with that, because, you know, in order to take part in this grant, you have to actually decommission the number of buses that are in your fleet that you're gonna add that would be an electric vehicle. So if we got five electric vehicles, we would have to take out five of our regular buses as well. So what's happened over the course of the last few weeks is that you all are well aware that the, kind of the landscape of electric vehicles is changing to, to kind of an uncertain future at this point. But additionally, through our discussions with Durham, they're, they're pulling out of this opportunity to be a part of adding electric vehicles to their fleet. And so that really puts us in a difficult situation, because for this to really work for us, we only have about ten vehicles left that we own. And so if we continue in this grant, we would have to take five of our existing fleet, decommission that, and then add our electric vehicles back to that. And so we really have not had any discussion with Durham as to whether or not that would be doable or not. Complicating matters even more. The grant allows, and when we first signed on for this, the grant allows for about three hundred thousand dollars per vehicle that would be added as far as an electric vehicle bus. Our latest estimate that we got to, from one of the bus companies today is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So understand that currently, under the grant, if we bought five vehicles, which is what we said we were going to, you're adding about roughly five hundred thousand dollars that's gonna have to come out of Warren County Schools' general fund. So that also says that when we first signed on to this grant, we thought we would have left over money to purchase the infrastructure for charging the electric vehicles, but we did not know that the buses would be three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per bus. So all that to be said, this grant is coming to head really quickly, and you all voted a couple of years ago to pursue this and to accept this. My recommendation, after getting together with all of the people in our central office that have been dealing with this, having discussions with Highland, is that we are, we do not feel comfortable with moving forward with this grant simply because of the expenditures that we are gonna have to do and the uncertainty of where the grant is. We do not know after the first of the year, with a new administration coming in, what that's gonna look like. So I felt like we needed to bring this to you tonight. I apologize in doing it so quickly, but it's kind of all fallen on us this, this quickly. For your consideration of potentially pulling out of this grant and allowing the money just to simply be put back into the award, to other awardees or someone else that. that, uh, might be taking, uh, possession of E V buses. So, with all that being said, that's a long-winded, um, explanation to say, this is the proposal that Highland's put in front of us about a week ago, to say that this is what you could, you'd do to continue with this purchase. Uh, but I do want you to be aware, the nuts and bolts of it is, is that between four and four hundred and five hundred thousand is probably what we would have to take out of general fund to purchase these five vehicles. So, happy to answer any questions, uh, but again, my recommendation is, would be that we, uh, we no longer pursue this. Uh, well, right. Plus the infrastructure that we need to be used.
So, so what we'd need to do is either make a motion to stay in this grant or opt, or get out of that grant?
You really don't, because you've given me the authority to pursue it.
Okay.
What I'm asking you tonight is, is to get permission to pull out of the grant.
So, do we have a motion for, got a motion by Mr. Johnson to opt out of this, uh, grant for E V buses? Second by Mr. Brown. Uh, any discussion over this? And I, I will go ahead and say that when we were at leadership conference, and those of us that were in the delegate assembly, uh, we sat with Washington County, that's usually who our group is, we sat with in that. Uh, and they were the first system in the state to get the E V buses. And, uh, from their, uh, board members that were at that table with us, they were not very happy with that. And that bus was not even in commission right now. Uh, so, uh, like I said, I think this is the best, best use of our time and our, is to pull out of this. So, just want to say, from experience that other, other, uh, school systems have tried this, and like I said, they were the first, and they didn't have very good luck.
And I do want to say, I hate it. I, I, I feel like it was a great opportunity for us. Uh, but it just, every time we tried to move forward with it, there was a, there was an obstacle that was in our way, and, um, we just, we never could make it happen, and then now it's coming to a head. And I just, I just don't feel like I can make a recommendation that we continue based on the expenditures that we would have to put in, and the fact that we would have to get rid of five of our own fleet, that I don't feel like is, is a, is a wise investment.
That's my logical intrigue.
I mean, those routes with our own buses are less expensive than the routes with Durham buses.
You can't trade something that's in commission for something that you don't even know that can stay in commission. There's too, there's, there's too many unexpected expenses and too much uncertainty about the future of this grant for us to logically stay in and like.
I think they wanted to get rid of the five, so that we would be forced eventually to buy more buses from them.
Well, and that's the thing, with the, the folks in Washington County said, they were, they're in the process of buying new buses right now, and, and E V is not on their radar of purchasing buses, so. I agree that this is, you know, especially since, you know, it's gonna, a minimum five hundred thousand dollars just to try this out.
Well, the thing about it is, if we had to, if we had to purchase buses, then they would be ours.
Right.
And we would know what we'd be purging start with. And I think from the beginning of this, uh, we all, one of those on the board before Mr. Johnson, Mr. Franklin, we all had a little bit of reservation in our minds where this was going and how much it was gonna cost us.
Right, when it was.
I knew when we met with, uh, they moved the electric system, when they started talking about state substation and all that, and how much it was gonna cost us, and then where was we going to put it? And we would probably be looking buying land stuff. And this was probably not a good move.
Still way early in that process, I bet. Yeah, I agree.
And there, there will be more options potentially, but I just feel like at this point, we, they, Highland needs to know something, and I did not feel right about just telling them we were gonna back out, but especially since this board took action to say we wanted to continue, so.
Well, anybody else got any discussion over this, before we take a vote? Alright, all in favor of opting out of this, say aye? Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Alright, uh, one more thing before we leave, uh, we've all got a copy, um, of Boardmanship Code of Conduct, and I think it's, uh, relevant that we, we look through this, especially in today, and, and what's happened over the last few months in our district. And, uh, with the chatter, with all the, the naysayers, and with all the negative things that are being talked about in our school system, I think tonight, we've had some people that showcased what great things are in Warren County Schools and what Warren County is doing. Uh, we're always gonna have those naysayers, but us as a board, we have a commitment beyond just, uh, citizens of Warren County. And I, I, I want to take the time, uh, to read this off, um, about what, what we're committed to. Um, it says, "The Board adopts these standards, we all adopted this and voted on these, is, uh, by the Tennessee School Board Association, as a guide to its members as they provide educational leadership for the youth in our state. Are my relations to the children? I will at all times think in terms of children first, always determining how my actions and decisions will affect the education and training of children. Number two, I will speak, I will seek to provide equal educational opportunities for all children. My relationships to my community. I will endeavor to appraise fairly both the present and future educational needs of the community and to support improvements as finances permit. I will represent at all times the entire school community and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics. For three, I will endeavor to keep the community informed about programs and needs of the schools. I will represent the board at the school district to the public in such a way as to promote both interest and support. I will refer to other board members, staff, student, and the public with respect when using social media. I will support the employment of the best qualified to serve as employees and insist on regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. I'll support and protect personnel and performance of their duties. I will not criticize employees publicly, but I will express any relevant concerns to the Director of Schools for investigation at, and action if necessary. My relationship with other board members. I will understand that the board makes decisions as a team, and that individual board members may not commit to the board, may not commit the board into any action. I will respect the opinion of other members, and I will accept the principle of majority rule. I will work harmoniously with other board members without trying to dominate the board or neglect my share of the work. I will refuse to make promises on how I will vote on a matter, and that will become before the board, and I will make decisions only after a complete discussion of items at a board meeting. My relationships with the Director of Schools. I will support the full administrative authority, as well as responsibility for the Director of Schools to properly discharge all professional duties. I will hold the Director of Schools accountable for working with staff and requiring them to work within the framework of policy set up by the board. I will understand that the board sets the standard for the school district through policy, and that board members do not manage the districts on a day-to-day basis. I will refer all compliant complaints and concerns to the Director of Schools and abstain from individual counsel and action re, in regard to staff members. My relationship to myself. I will uphold the integrity and independence of the position. I will become familiar with federal and state education laws and school board policies. I will educate myself about my duties and responsibilities and current education issues by individual study and through participation in programs providing need, needed information. I will continue, continually advocate for the goals of the school district. I will vote and act impartially for the good of the school district. I will avoid conflict of interest, and I will refrain from any, from using my position on the board for personal or partisan gain. I will attend all board meetings and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at each meeting. And I will model civility to students, employees, and all elements of the community by encouraging the free expression of opinion by all board members and engage in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered by the board." So, I think it's important that we do, uh, understand these things in such times that we're in right now, with, with, with a lot of the hostility towards us as a board and as a school system, and there's a lot of negativity floating around about things that's going on. And, uh, I just want us as a, as a board to, to, to remember what we're here for. And I think, you know, that first thing is our relationship to the children, is, is, is children's always gonna, our students are always first. And, you know, we, we are, we do have a commitment to these kids, to our community, but also to our staff and to our personnel and to each other. So, I just want to take that time to let us reflect on that and remember that, and I want to thank each and every one of you guys for, for, for your leadership on, on, on this board. With that being said, have we got any more comments or anything else before we dismiss? Alright, can I get a motion to dismiss? Got a motion by Mr. Judkins? Got a second by Mr. Colwell, all in favor, say aye? Alright, may you adjourn.